This is an appeal in the matter of reviewing the application of Sarah Rose and how the proceedings in house.
Yes, Mrs Fulbrook.
May I please the Court, I appear on behalf of the appellant in this matter. My learned friend, Mr Atkinson appeals, appears on behalf of the first respondent.
Yep.
And my learned friend, Mr Taffo, appears on behalf of the second respondent.
Good, well you'll be pleased to know, we've had the opportunity to read the papers, including your helpful discussion arguments. So we think we know what you think the case is about, and we tend to agree. And the first question really is, have you discussed timings with each other?
We have, my lord, yes.
And how does that go?
So at the moment, the intention is for me to speak until three o'clock today.
Three o'clock?
Three o'clock today, but I mean obviously I'd be guided by your lordship's leadership in going more quickly, it may be given you a lot of indication now to reading.
I, my immediate reaction is to raise half an eyebrow, I would have thought with your having, with the benefit of your skeleton, you could do shorter than that, but see how you go.
I'm grateful, my lord, and then, and then my learned friends will follow from me, and then I've, I've reserved twenty minutes to reply tomorrow, it may not be necessary to use all of that time, of course. But it's, it's our understanding that court wants to finish by midday tomorrow at the latest, and obviously we will endeavour to make sure that happens.
Needs to finish by midday tomorrow.
Needs, I'm grateful.
Our provisional view is that we might, might not need all that time.
Well, I'm grateful.
See how you go.
Of course, my lord, and as I said, I'm very happy to be guided by, by the Court as to the pace of my submissions.
We don't, we don't want to stop you saying anything you do want to say, but if, if at any stage you are simply repeating what you've put in your skeleton, it's just possible that we might interrupt.
And, and, and I, I'd appreciate that more, of course.
Okay.
Then, very briefly, by way of housekeeping, it seems that everything is in order, but just to check that the Court should have a core bundle, a supplementary bundle and authorities bundle. Great. Moving on then, just to set some very brief context, I appreciate that I'm not going to go through the facts in detail because the Court's read those, but it's just to, to, to ground the Court in what we're actually looking at here. If I could ask the Court then to turn to page twenty-five of the supplementary bundle.
Yeah.
This, what this is, is it's a master plan of the proposed development, so it shows you the development that has been approved by the first respondent, and it's the subject of this appeal, and it's just to get the indication of what, what you see, and to help, help put the documents into context. You'll see to the north-east, an existing suite of buildings, that's the existing industrial estate which you'll see referred to in various documents. And then, just by way of further context, if I could take the Court to page twenty-nine, just a few pages on. What, what, what you see there is an earlier, it's an, it's an earlier image, and you can see that the red line boundary is bigger on that image, and, and the reason I take the Court to that is because in the course of the application, that the size of the proposed element scale was reduced, and you can obviously see by comparing the two, what was, what was removed from there. Obviously, as the Court have appreciated, the entirety of the proposed element is in the AONB or National Landscapes that is now referred to in planning policy. And it was also agreed that the entire development is major development in the AONB, and that engages what was then paragraph one seven seven of the NPBF. I won't take the Court to that now, it's in the supplementary bundle, but it engages a very high test in order to permit development, it's necessary to show exceptional circumstances in the public process, and it sets out various considerations, and I've come to that, perhaps in some more detail towards the, the close of my submissions. And then just, by way of legal context, although it's not directly relevant to this case, your, your Court will see in the authorities bundle at tab one, that I've included a copy of the updated statutory duty that applies to the determiner, well, the exercise of functions relating to land or affecting land in an AONB. Now that provision has been amended and strengthened, but that took place after the grants of planning permission in this case, so I don't belong in it, but it's, it's, it's just, we would like the Court to be aware that the statutory context in which AONBs or National Landscapes is considered has been, if you like, has been strengthened protection for it. Without any further ado then, I'll, I'll, I'll move into the first round of my appeal, if I may, and obviously as the Court will have appreciated, there were three elements to our first round of appeal, we no longer pursue the first. So the focus of my submissions is whether, in essence, the judge was wrong to dismiss the, the appellant's claim on the basis of an absence of prejudice. And the, the essence really of the ground, all the remaining elements, are that the judge took too narrow a view of prejudice in this case, and that led her to, in her decision. But before I come to the detail of the matters that the Court has already seen in my skeleton argument, there's one matter that's raised by my learned friend, Mr Taffo, second respondent, in relation to the standard of review or the approach that the Court should take to the judge's findings in relation to this matter. My, my learned friend seeks to portray this ground as a challenge to the judge's finding of fact in relation to the absence of prejudice, and she relies on the Court Appeals judgment in smetch properties.
Yes.
And I, I, I would like some, just a little time on, on that and one other authority, if I may, so smetch properties is...
What is there to dispute, before we look at the authorities, what is, what are you saying and what is Mr Taffo saying, so we've got a contact?
Yes.
Rather than reading in the abstract?
Yes, of course, my lord, well, Mr Taffo relies on smetch properties to say, in essence, that, that the nature of the judge's finding was a finding of fact.
Is what finding, that I, I understand that, but I mean, it's what findings that are disputed between you?
Yes, well, the absence of prejudice is the finding that we dispute.
Okay, that's, that, that's all right then, yeah.
Yes, or perhaps putting it more broadly, it's the judge's own ruling finding that there was no unfairness in this case.
Yeah.
And so, what I say about smetch properties is that was a case dealing with, or dealing with the judge's exercise of discretion to refuse a remedy, applying the simplex test that applied before section thirty-one two A was introduced, and still applies to statutory review, although not, also in that territory here. The effective, the essential states of principle that are relied upon, we found in paragraph twenty-nine of the judgment, so it's in the authorities bundle, page three of the precise page in the main book.
I do not consider.
Yes. Exactly, page three nine eight of the authorities bundle.
So this is the Court Appeal Judge, okay, yeah.
This is Lord Justice Sales giving the lead judgment, yes, in the Court of Appeal. So paragraph twenty-nine, Lord Justice Sales says, you know, talking about the weight that can give to the lower, the, the judge below's findings, and how much, obviously, weight the Court gives, that will depend on the circumstances of each case, the nature of the finding, and the range of evidential material before the Court. And then at paragraph thirty, the Court goes on to say, well, the, the weight that the judge, that this Court gives to findings below might be enhanced where the judge has particular expertise, it noted in that case Patterson J's expertise as the judge of planning court, it noted the difference in time that the Court had to consider the various submissions in that case, and what my learned friend effectively says is reliance on smetch properties. The question for the Court here is whether the judge below had legitimate and proper reasons for reaching the findings that she did. It's not for the Court to, to revisit the question of whether there was unfairness overall in this case. My first point, I suppose, in response to that, is this is a case that can be clearly distinguished, this is about the exercise of judicial discretion in relation to remedies, it's not about a primary finding.
That doesn't affect the point of principle, Mr Fulbrook. Points of principle on judicial findings of fact are very well known, smetch properties is not alone in them. Fajian Shabani has something to say about it too.
Well, my lady, in relation to points of principle, I wonder if I could take the Court to a judgment which I say is much more on point from the Court of Appeal, in relation to that point, and that's the case of Abbey Martin. And that's towards, that's towards the beginning of the authorities bundle, it's tab three is where the case begins. And this is Law Justice, the ju, the judgments and the leading judgment given by Law Justice Laws. Now, the context of the case is it's a judicial review of a coal mining company, and a decision by the Coal Authority to grant a, a mining licence to a rival company. And the principal argument before the, before the judge below was that the decision-making process adopted by the Coal Mining Authority was defective and unfair, and you can see that summarised at paragraph thirteen of the judgment. And the substance of the argument then, you can see, develops a bit further in paragraph fourteen. About the failure to provide certain information, the failure to, failure to provide fair notice of concerns.
But here we know what the position is, we know who should have been allowed to speak and on what basis, so all of that is clear, the only question is the assessment as to whether or not there was prejudice as a result of a factor of breaches that are not in dispute.
That's right.
Whether or not notices had to be given and so on, which was what with the content of fairness, which is a matter of law.
Well, my lord, it, yes, we are looking at whether there was prejudice, we're looking at overall whether that led to unfairness in the decision-making process.
I, this is not a ground of challenge that the common law principles of procedural fairness have been breached, as I understand it, the allegation was and was upheld, that the provisions of the Constitution were breached, and the question is whether that error leads to a caution, and the answer is, the error would only lead to a caution if it was the material, and if there was no prejudice, because it didn't matter, then you wouldn't caution it.
Well, my lord, there were two elements of the argument that were put before the judge below, there was the fact that the Constitution wasn't followed, but also consequentially that that led to unfairness, because what ended up happening was that you had just one person speaking against or opposing the application, you had four people speaking.
Are you, are you distinguishing between unfairness and prejudice?
There's no.
Well, here, what the Court is looking at...
I mean, in one sense, clearly the fact that the Constitution wasn't followed can be said to be unfair. You can say that, but the question is, did it actually cause prejudice? Or at least, that, to my way of thinking, seems to be the point in ground one.
Well, my lord, I, I, I see, I see prejudice and fairness as being one and the same thing in this case, because...
I thought you did.
The, the question is whether the, if the Constitution's been breached, and that is accepted, and that's a finding that has been made, if that breach led to unfairness, which is my submission, if it did, that's one of the submissions I made, then overall you have, you have, that is, that is prejudicial, that is...
Well, that's a value judgment based on the fact findings that have been made, but the fact that it's a value judgment means that there are constraints on how, to what extent we can interfere with it, not the same as a finding of law.
Well, my lady, maybe just to complete the reference to the case in Abbey Martin, if I could take the Court to what is said about the arguments being made in that case, so if I could take the Court to paragraph twenty-six of that judgment.
Yes, before you do that, because you're going to get to Lawyer McMartin, can we just be clear, the word fairness can be used in one of two ways, it is a word which has a legal meaning, common law principles of natural justice or procedural fairness, you don't tell somebody the case against you, for example, and that's one thing, and that doesn't seem to be what we are discussing, you're talking about fairness in a broader sense, this shouldn't have happened and it's jolly iffy, and therefore there's prejudice, you're using fairness, I think, in a non-technical legal sense, are you?
My lord, no, I think that here, you, you have the consequences that those opposing the development, including my client, didn't have a fair hearing for...
So you're alleging a breach of common law procedural fairness then?
Well, yes, I mean, I, the, yes, if, if you like, I, I say that the, the breach of the Constitution led to procedural unfairness, because it led to a situation where, as I said, a fair hearing wasn't given, because a number of people wanting to oppose the development weren't able to speak, a number of people in favor of it weren't...
At some point, you're going to tell us how it is that it was unfair to your client when she made a deliberate decision not to apply to have a speaking slot.
Well, my lady, I can, I can deal with that, that was an argument or an allegation that was made against my client below, and it was not one that was accepted by the judge, it's not a finding of fact that the judge made, that my client could have but didn't exercise her right to speak. The situation, just to address that head on...
Well, did she apply for a speaking slot?
She, she didn't apply for a speaking slot, and she explains why in her witness statement.
She thought somebody else was going to speak on her...
She did, my lady, exactly.
But she knew that CPRE weren't going to be doing.
No, she didn't, she didn't know, until, as I, I'm mind structured, and she didn't know until after the hearing itself, that nobody from CPRE had actually spoken. And what she says, she assumes CPRE would speak, and also you do have in the bundle evidence that even, that even up to the day before the committee hearing, CPRE was still wrangling with the council about whether it would let it speak on behalf, or whether it's expected to speak on behalf of the, the group.
And is there evidence that you'd privy to those discussions? Is there evidence?
To the wrangling? There's not, I, I don't think there's evidence before this Court, but my instructions are that, yes, she would.
They're not instructions, evidence, there's no evidence that she was involved or knew about these discussions between CPRE and the council, about whether CPRE would attend.
No, her evidence, my lord, is that, as she says in her statement, at, at paragraph, at page fifteen of the supplementary bundle. And paragraph eight, paragraph eight of her statement, she says that, the Court can read that.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I thought the position was, she decided that she wasn't going to apply for a speaking slot because she assumed CPRE would, would do it, and they didn't.
That's right, my lady, this is more than an assumption inasmuch as she was aware, and the Court can see from the evidence, that CPRE was actively attempting to speak, she is a member of CPRE.
But that doesn't mean she knows, you need evidence of that.
Where, where does it say that she, 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 she said she, she knew that they intended to seek a speaking slot? But there's nothing further than the fact that she knew that they had that intention.
Well, there's nothing from her as to that, my lady, no, but what the Court does have is, it does have a correspondence between CPRE and the council.
To know that which she was privy to.
She was not privy to all, well, she was privy to some of it, but not to all of it, my lady, exactly, but the Court doesn't have evidence as to what she was and wasn't privy to before. But again, what I'd say about that is, again, going back to the judge's findings below, that point was put to her, it was addressed in the manner which I've addressed the Court on today. The judge did not dismiss the claims, claim for want of prejudice on the basis that she did not separately register to speak at the committee meeting, because it was on the basis that even the failure to stop CPRE from speaking, who she supported and whom she was a member, did not lead to any substantial prejudice to her or to CPRE.
Do you accept that her decision not to speak is at least potentially relevant to the case we have to deal with?
Well, my lord, it, it might have been relevant to the judge's decision below, but it's not a basis upon which she reached her view, and there's no, there's no respondents' notice.
Forgive me, forgive me, forgive me, I just asked the question again. Do you accept that her decision not to speak is at least potentially relevant to the issue we have to decide?
My lord, it's potentially relevant to the question of whether or not there was unfairness, but I, I want to be clear as to the issue that this Court has to decide, because there's no respondents' notice, there's no party saying formally before the Court that actually the judge was wrong not to find that there was no prejudice because the appellant did not register to speak.
You don't need to, they don't need to put in a respondents' notice, I mean, if they did put in a respondents' notice, it would be upholding the judge's decision for a further reason, rather than saying that she was wrong.
Well, my lady, there's not a reason that the judge gives, it's not a reason that has been raised in the respondents' notice, it was an argument that was, was made, but I mean, it's not one that the judge chose to, chose to use or adopt in rejecting the appellant's, or case. You can see, the judge records the argument at paragraph forty-eight of the judgment.
Thank you.
Page one hundred of the core bundle.
Did you say paragraph forty-eight?
Forty-eight, yes, page one hundred of the core bundle.
This Taffo also submitted.
Yes, my lord, in that, yes, it's just a few lines down.
So do you submit that they, she had reason to believe that they would be speaking?
Yes, that the appellant had reason to believe, yes, that they would be speaking.
And that's based on what?
Well, it's, it's, it's based on the fact that she was aware that the CPRE was still looking or seeking to see, to, to speak right at the end, she also wasn't aware that Dr Newport of CPRE had opted not to use the individual speaker slot that she was allotted until after the event.
Well, the evidence, as opposed to what you're saying, is all we know what's in paragraph fifteen.
It is, it is, my lord, plus the evidence that you have correspondence between CPRE and the council, but in answer to my Lord, Lord Justice Stuart Smith's question, that's what I note to be the case, and I appreciate there's a separate question which will ask about the evidence and the status of the case.
And you, you said two things, forgive me, I didn't get the first one, the second one was she wasn't aware that CPRE had elected not to take a personal slot.
That's right, my lord, yes.
What was the first one?
The first was that she was also aware of correspondence between CPRE and the council, where CPRE was continuing up to seek a, to seek a slot to challenge the council's decision not to allow her to speak.
I'm sorry to lay to this point, but it is quite important that we have evidence, not evidence given by council or instruction. Is there any evidence that she was not aware or was aware, I couldn't find anything that discussed what her state of knowledge was, as opposed to her assumptions?
Yes, there's no evidence, as far as I'm aware, my lord, there's no evidence before the Court as to her state of knowledge.
So we don't know what, she thought, all we actually know from the witness statement that she signed, and she's then reputed to say the truth, though, with nothing of the truth, all we know from her statement is that she assumed, and we don't know the reasons why she made that assumption or what she knew, that's all we know, is it on the evidence about her state of knowledge.
My lord, I just want to check exactly what she said.
Expected.
She didn't assume, she expected, yes, exactly.
Or expected.
Well, my lord, I, I do, I do say there's a material difference between the two.
I'm happy to change the word assumed to expected, but there's nothing about the state of knowledge which gave rise to that expectation.
There's no evidence specifically, I mean, what you have is that she is a member of CPRE, she, she supports the claim, as I understand it, she brought this application to the attention of CPRE, and that CPRE obviously support her in bringing this judicial review, those are the facts that the Court has.
I've just been reminding myself of the arguments that were aired before the judge, if one goes to page one hundred and four, paragraph sixty-seven, we see recorded your submissions in the Court below, and if one looks halfway through that paragraph, second, she, that's your client, had taken a deliberate decision not to register to speak herself, when she could have done, because she thought CPR can't, were going to speak, she had therefore lost the opportunity to speak personally, as a direct result of the unlawful approach to its constitution. So that point was put before the judge as a very clear argument on your client's behalf, and I am struggling to understand why you say that paragraph seventy-six didn't reject it directly.
Well, my lord, my lady, um...
I mean, she didn't need to make a fact finding that your client was denied the opportunity to speak, because that was the case you were advancing.
My lady, I, I, I take the Court, first of all, to paragraph sixty-nine.
Yes.
Where the, the judge looks at both what Dr Newport on behalf of CPRE would have said, and says there's no, there's no evidence of that, she's not making any find, she says there's no evidence about what they would have been prevented from saying, but she's not saying that the claimant couldn't rely on the refusal to permit CPRE to speak in certain events.
That's a separate point, and she's addressing the argument that you were putting together in sixty, in the first part of sixty-seven and in sixty-eight, which was the one based on natural England.
My lady, that's, well, that's right, it is, well, it's, she does address, so paragraph seventy-three, the fact that in relation to the AONB unit in natural England, the claimant could not rely on any prejudice caused by reason of their refusal to speak, because she is not part of that, that, that group. My lady, if, if the, if the judge below was going to reach a finding that because the appellant was not part of CPRE, she couldn't rely on prejudice to CPRE, that is where one would have expected to find it, but one doesn't...
And we were discussing her personal situation, the, the submission that you made to us was that there was no finding by the judge that your client had not put, had, had failed to speak personally, and that that didn't give rise to prejudice. And I'm just saying, it seems to me that looking at the passage as a whole, that's plainly what she did make a finding about, amongst other things, in the middle of paragraph fifty-nine, that she makes a finding that there's been no clear indication by your client as to what the prejudice was, that because there was no evidence as to what she'd been prevented from saying. If a claimant alleges that they have been denied an opportunity to make oral representations, and as a result have suffered material prejudice, they need to be clear about what that prejudice is, what have they been prevented from saying, there is no evidence that either of them, and that means Dr Newport and your client, either of them would have said any more than is already contained in their written representations.
My, my, I said that's what she says, and I, and I say the significance there, she's treating both CPRE and claimants effectively as being in the same position. She's not making a distinction on the basis that the claimant herself did not speak, that argument, as you later seen, was squarely put to her, she was given the opportunity to dismiss this claim on that basis, and she didn't do so, and that's, that's my, that's my argument.
This, this all flowed out of you taking us to Abbey Martin, have you said what you want to say?
No, I haven't, my lord, I haven't quite got to that yet.
You, you were taking us to paragraph thirteen.
I, I was, exactly, so, my, so first to paragraph twenty, now to paragraph twenty-six, if I may, yes.
Yes.
In paragraph twenty-six, obviously, Law Justice Laws is setting out well, well-understood principles of natural justice, and Law Justice Lawyers referred to, talks about what's the requirements for fairness demand, being, being fact-sensitive, depending on the nature of the decision, depending on context, and then records the submission to the vag, that, that the Court should not interfere with the judge's assessment.
Forgive me for interrupting you, Vider.
I'm...
Definitely Vider.
Definitely Vider.
Most grateful, I'd be to be praised.
Easier to say as well.
Yes, it is, it is indeed, Mr Vider, that the Court should not interfere with the judge's assessment of what fairness required in the particular case unless the Court concluded that the judge had earned in principle, and I say that is the same submission that the Court is being asked to respond to here. And what the Court then says at paragraph twenty-seven, I'll, I'll let the Court read that, if I may, that's how that argument is responded to.
The issue of principle in that case was the ambit of the duty of fairness owed by a public body in given circumstances, is that the analogy that you're trying to draw?
Well, the, the analogy I'm trying to draw is that what the Court was looking at is, well, is something fair or unfair? That is a question of principle.
But are you saying that this is a case about the ambit of the duty of fairness?
Well, yes, my lady, to some extent, this is, this is a case clearly squarely about Well, yes, my lady, to some extent. This is, this is a case clearly squarely about a breach of the constitution. That leads to unfairness, we say.
But this is why you've got to be careful about the way in which you use the word unfairness. Because in public law, it's used in a very specific way, and in your grounds of claim, you did use it in that way. It used to be called natural justice, it's now called procedural fairness. And irrespective of the constitution, if I take something away from you and I don't give you a hearing, that is a breach of procedural fairness. Now, here, looking at the judge's judgment, she finds a breach of the constitution, full stop. She then talks about overall unfairness, but that doesn't appear to be a breach of the legal duty of procedural fairness, and she considers prejudice there. So if it's a breach of procedural fairness, I can understand that the requirements of that are a matter of law, although you may well want to take account of what the decision-maker, the judge here, said. Or it might be general unfairness, and if it's general unfairness, it's part of an overall assessment of whether or not what has happened calls for a remedy.
My lord, I, I think there is a distinction between the two things in that.
Two rich two things.
Well, between the remedy and the overall finding that there's been an error of law, if you like, an actionable error of law on the part of the public authority. My lord, that's one of the reasons why we don't pursue the first element of our ground one anymore, because it's quite clear from what the court upheld in the Bradbury case. There are two questions. The first question is, did the breach, whatever it is, in this case, the breach of the constitution, amount to an error of law? There's no such thing as a technical procedural breach. And my lord, that is the conclusion that I'm attacking here. There is a separate conclusion as to relief, which is a discretionary matter for the court.
You're not attacking the finding of breach, you were happy with the finding of breach.
Yes.
She found that there were two findings, one, because they were wrong to say they had to speak an individual, and two, they were wrong to let the other side speak, I forget, twice or three times. So there's no issue about the error of law here. The issue is, what is the consequence of the error?
Well, my lord, there are still two distinct elements to that, because there is the question of whether that is a substantive breach as opposed to a technical breach. And that, that in my submission, amidst of only one answer, it either was or wasn't, there's a separate discretionary question about remedies, which the court will then move on to consider. And so that's the way I put it, and I say that is why this case, Abbey Mill, is on point. It is for the court to consider, because it is a matter of principle, it is for the court to consider.
What is the point of principle? Because I'm now struggling, I'm afraid, I don't understand what the point of principle is.
Well, whether there was a substantive error of law on the part of the local planning authority.
It was a substantive error, they misinterpreted the constitution, not once but twice. The question is, did that error render the decision unlawful?
I hesitate to correct, my lord, but I don't think that the judge actually did find that there was an error in allowing more people to speak, but then she decided on the hypothesis she might be wrong about that.
My lady, I think you're right, well, effectively, she decided in relation to the sort of additional argument that was unfair, because, if you like, yes, there was no breach in allowing others to speak, but a consequence of having done so.
She made an assumption that, in your favour, that if that was unfair, then the question was what were the consequences in terms of prejudice? I think is the correct analysis. I see Miss Taffer as nodding.
Well, I, 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 I think, in essence, that is my submission, that she, she didn't find that that was a substantive breach, she found there was a mere technical breach, which wasn't enough for her to then go on and consider the question of whether there should be remedies or not. And that is why I say this is a point of principle, it's distinguishable from smed properties.
And forgive me for asking such a question in such distinguished company, but when you say a technical breach, you mean in normal parlance, a breach that doesn't matter?
Precisely, that, that is, that is what the judge found. She found it was a breach that didn't matter because there was no prejudice. Yes.
So we come back, we can't, don't be, forgive me again, don't we come back to the question of prejudice, and her finding that there's no prejudice?
Yes, but my lord, I say the approach to that is the same as the approach in Abbey Mills. It's one for the court to consider as a matter of principle. It's not like in smed properties, which is an exercise of discretion in relation to remedies, and that is in my submission, separate.
But then, okay, taking that on board, you've still got to satisfy us that we should set aside the judge's finding that there was no prejudice.
Yes.
Is that where you're going next?
That is, that is where, that is where I'm going next, yes.
Have you said all you want to on smed and Abbey Mine?
I think all I would say is make the submission that even if the court decides it's going to follow that approach in smed property, that the judge did erred as a matter of principle. There's not just a mere disagreement with the fact she erred as a matter of principle, because she took an unduly constrained approach to prejudice, which I say is contrary to authority, and that's where I'm going to go with the court now. So, my lords and my ladies, it's not necessary, obviously, I think, for me to go through the judgment in detail, the court is well aware of that.
As you may have gathered, we've read it.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not at all surprised by that. Simply put, the judge made a number of strong findings in relation to the breach. Just a few quotations and references. Paragraph forty-nine, the judge said the local planning authority had singularly failed to properly apply its constitution. Paragraph fifty-five, the judge said that officers adopted a muddled approach and misled objectives, including national and statutory objectives. Paragraph fifty-eight, the misleading advice was stark. And then paragraph sixty, there has been a breach of the council's constitution and one which has had the direct effect of putting off two national organisations who wish to speak at the meeting and could have spoken consistently with the constitution. These are all fact findings in support of the judge's finding that there had been, in this case, a breach of the constitution. And so then, having reached those findings, the facts, the judge turned to the question of prejudice. Court has already looked at that. I say paragraph sixty-nine, the judge's judgment is, is, is key here to understanding what her reasoning is, was, sorry, at least in respect of the appellant and CPRE, who I say she did treat as one. And it's, it is that paragraph in the middle that there is no evidence, or that line, sorry, there is no evidence that either of them would have said anything more and is already contained in their written submissions. And that is, in essence, why the judge found there to be no prejudice in this matter. She then looks at other authorities which she distinguished, and I'll go on to those, but I say that's the core of her reasoning, at least in relation to the appellant and CPRE. And of course, I, I don't demur from the fact that that is a relevant matter. It, it is something that is a consideration that the judge is entitled to have regard to. And the court does not have specific evidence about what CPRE or the appellant would have said, so I accept that. But where I depart from the judgment from the reference is I say that was not and is not, as a matter of principle, dispositive of a, of a, of a, of the issue of prejudice, the question of prejudice. And indeed, if it were, I say that would be inherently problematic for anyone seeking to make, make out a claim that the claimant, the appellant does in this case, because it's very difficult to see how such evidence would be treated. I mean, it would inevitably be after the fact evidence, or almost inevitably, unless there was some kind of speaking note prepared in advance, and the court would have to consider quite carefully what way it could give to a claimant's evidence after the decision.
That's not really so, is it? I mean, you might have evidence that, had I been called to speak, I would have mentioned the thing that cropped up this morning, which might not otherwise have been before the committee. Or if I had been allowed to speak, I would have repeated the substance of my objections. Two different things, neither of which would necessarily be viewed with scepticism.
But, yes, but there is an inherent problem where one is requiring claimants to provide evidence about what they would have said had they been given the opportunity to speak.
But it's only problematic if, if they've got no proper basis for asserting it.
Well, or, or, for example, if a claimant was, was simply unaware that they had an opportunity to speak, or believed that they weren't going to go, they would not.
But that's your client, that's your client's case. Your client's case is that she is prejudiced in part by the fact that she did not speak. It is material, we've read her written submissions, to know whether she would have said anything different from what was already assumed to be taken into account by the committee. And the, the point of, that my Lord, Lord Justice Lewis was on, is we just don't have anything.
No.
So while accepting that the absence of evidence from CPRE and/or the appellant is not necessarily dispositive, you need something.
You do, my lord, I say there is something, there is, there is something here when one looks properly at the issue of prejudice.
What is it? What is the prejudice, in a nutshell?
Well, my lady, first of all, the fact that they weren't allowed to speak, one does not know, and the court should be very slow and take the court to authorities that, to assume there's no, that nothing would have changed, even if they had.
The, 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 you have to show there is prejudice, you have to show that as a result of the decision, you are in some way worse off. And saying nobody can guess what, what might have happened is not an answer.
Well, my lady, perhaps I can address that by, by taking the court through the authorities, as I tend to do now. I say, I say that, that, that is, in certain circumstances, an answer, that that is sufficient, because there is much more, as the court will obviously appreciate, to making representations than simply conveying facts in writing or submissions in writing. There is an important context here, which is this is a committee meeting, a democratic meeting, at which people are specifically invited and given the opportunity to persuade.
But they've got to persuade in accordance with the law and the planning policies. The committee can't do what they like, they've got to follow, for example, there's a paragraph one seven seven of the National Planning Policy Framework you mentioned. This isn't Parliament, this is a local authority operating within a framework.
My lord, of course I accept that, but as all of the submissions made, for example, in writing by the appellant, were by reference to those important planning considerations, particularly one seven seven of the NPPM, the same for Natural England, the same for the A O M B, who did speak, but also the same with CPRE.
A O M B, I thought they did a joint presentation effectively with Natural England.
They did, that's right, my lord, yes. A O M B spoke, but that's right, they spoke on behalf of themselves and Natural.
They've had some persuasion, they've had three minutes, and they could have had another six minutes if both the claimant and A O M B had spoken. But of course, it would only have been three minutes because your client didn't want to speak. So they've lost the three minutes of persuasion from the CPRE.
They've lost an additional three minutes from Natural England, had they been allowed to speak in person, and an additional three minutes from CPRE, saying, my lord, that's right, that's six, six additional minutes that they've lost. That, that, that is in my submission.
Natural England haven't brought a claim.
No, 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 they haven't.
They don't presumably feel prejudice.
Well, my lord, I disagree, they, they did feel prejudice, they did, and there is evidence that they did feel prejudice. And I can also tell, we'll take the court to, that's in due course.
We're looking at six minutes of speech at maximum, three minutes by CPRE, three minutes by Natural England, and in addition to their joint session. And that's, that's it, basically.
Well, my lord, as I understand it, there's also the opportunity to, to take questions from members of the committee if they had any. Now, in this case, you can see from the transcript, there were no, there were no questions, but that is also a possibility as well. So perhaps if I then turn to what I say as ground one, Roman two of my skeleton argument, which is first of all, there was a denial directly as far as CPRE is concerned and indirectly as far as the appellant is concerned of a substantive right.
I just don't understand this indirectly, I'm sorry. She isn't CPRE, she is one of the constituents of CPRE, but she had her own choice as to whether to turn up. And I can't at the moment understand how by denying CPRE the right to turn up, it makes any difference to that.
Well, my lady, because her choice was influenced by the, what I mean, the unlawful denial of CPRE's.
It wasn't, the evidence has shown us was that she expected them to turn up. You haven't shown us any evidence as to on what that expectation was based, we've been through that.
She says, paragraph eighty-four, saying, I was aware that they intended to seek a speaking slot. So it's not, she was aware they intended to speak, and she expected the substance of CPRE's concerns to be presented at the meeting.
Yeah, she, she doesn't say that, actually, Mr Volbuck, she says, I was aware that CPRE intended to seek a speaking slot, which is rather different from intending to speak. All she knew, though, is that, the evidence is that they were asking for a slot, we don't, she doesn't know whether or not they were going to get it.
Well, my lord, we of course do know, though, that CPRE did ask for a speaking slot.
Yes, but we're talking about your client, and it really is important to look at evidence. We're not hearing evidence from you, and what she said was she knew that CPRE intended to seek a speaking slot. She couldn't have known whether or not it would have been granted, and there's no evidence that she knew it hasn't been granted. That's the only, we can only go on your client's own sworn statement with a statement of truth.
Well, I understand that, I'm not going to repeat what I've already said in relation to that, the court has my point on it. But the point I make then, and I, the court has my point about the appellant, but I make, I still make nevertheless submissions on behalf of CPRE, of whom my client is a member, and who were directly affected here. They were denied a substantial, substantive right that they intended to exercise, and my lord, I say that is prejudicial. Nothing more is necessarily required to show prejudice. It is very different, this case, from the denial of a right that nobody had any intention of exercising. And some, there are some analogous cases, so two cited by the judge at paragraph sixty-six of her judgment, Ramley, Soderbarm and Tesco's, the court doesn't have those in the bundle. But they are, they are challenges to the failure to provide background documents, statutory duty to provide background documents before a committee meeting. But in those cases, as I understand it, there was no evidence. But anyone would have done anything with those background documents, so it's not a substantive right that anyone intended to act on or exercise. Very different here, because there was a substantive right to appear at the meeting, that CPRE did want to exercise, and it was denied. That, in my submission, is prejudicial.
Why is that any different from simply saying the constitution wasn't followed?
Because the constitution might have been followed, might not have been followed by, by, let's say, for example, my lady, that the constitution required a notification to be given to a certain group before the committee meeting, and it transpires that that notification wasn't given.
No, but, I mean, we're talking about the particular means by which the, the constitution was not followed in this case. It wasn't followed because they weren't given a speaking slot, right? That's what we're arguing about. You say the fact the constitution wasn't followed because they weren't given a speaking slot is not good enough, you've got to show prejudice. Now you're saying you can show prejudice by the fact that they weren't given a speaking slot.
My lady, I say there's a distinction, because you might offer a speaking slot to someone who doesn't want to speak, or doesn't end up turning up, for example.
Like your client, she didn't have to speak.
My lord, we, I, I mean, I hesitate to repeat the suggestions that you've made on that point. But that is not the case here, CPRE did want to speak.
You say it's more than a breach of the constitution, because it just so happens that the person who was denied a speaking slot wanted to speak, which is what you would expect, because they wouldn't have applied for a speaking slot in the first place if they didn't want to speak.
But my lady, this is all in the context of whether they can be effectively a technical breach, a technical breach of natural justice or otherwise. Well, there are plenty of scenarios from which that line of authorities is developed, where that can be the case. Where, for example, you notify somebody of a meeting, but they don't have any interest, you fail to notify someone of a meeting, which you're required to do. They have no interest in attending, they don't attend. Now, a claimant could come to court and say, well, the constitution wasn't followed, there's a breach, and they'd be right about that, but the court would not call that a substantive or actual breach, because there's no prejudice, it was not a right that they intended to rely on.
I think you've covered this. I, I think, as I understand it, and forgive me if I'm wrong about this, you say it's a, it's a breach giving rise to real prejudice because CPRE had indicated a wish to speak.
Yes, my lord.
Full stop.
Yes, yes.
That's it.
That's it, that's it, that's it, yes, yes.
And that's your second point in paragraph thirty-three of your skeleton.
It, it, it is, it is, my lord, yes, and if I could just take the court to an authority, you don't find that in my skeleton. But I say it's important, it's an important authority for considering at this point, and the point I'd want to make in relation to, sorry, my, my, I'm dealing actually mainly with paragraph twenty, paragraph thirty-two of the skeleton, I think paragraph thirty-three deals with the question of fairness, which, and we'll come back to you briefly, although we have discussed it.
Okay, so you want to take to authority?
Yes, I do, it's the case of Roxborne, and it's tab six. Yes, I do, it's the case of Roxborne, and it's tab six. Just double check that actually, the, tab two.
Roxto is tab two.
Roxto, Roxto is tab two of the authorities' bundle. By way of context, it's a judicial review of a decision of a local authority by a former tennis coach relating to decisions that resulted in him losing his employment, it's not a planning case, but I rely on it for the statement of principle.
Hold on, can we just check the facts? Any statement of principle has to be read in context. So can I just have a moment to read the head?
Yes, of course, my lord, yeah.
So they got information that he allegedly interfered with young girls, they didn't put that to him and said they're going to not employ him. That's the context, is it?
Yes, my lord.
Oh yes, prior to the council meeting, he was not asked for any explanation, yeah.
My lord, so that's the context, and then paragraph four, which although of course it must be read in context, I do say it's quite clearly a statement of principle, it's a summary of principles if you like.
Are you going to follow read three first, yes?
Yes.
Do you want to read anything apart from four?
No, my lord.
Down over the page or?
Yes, down over the page, yes, so it goes, it goes, there are six subparagras.
That's the quote from Coffin, isn't it?
Yes, it is, yes, my lady.
There's been quite a lot of case law on this since.
You allow four. Subparagraph four do you?
I do.
Thank you.
The point here is actually, where, where an individual person is denied a right to be heard, the court must be very slow. And, and part of the reason is that is that it's very difficult to know what would have happened had they attended, and it's not just about what they would have said. So maybe if I, if I then move to paragraph 33 of my skeleton, I deal with the, the question of unfairness. I've obviously covered that to some extent, but I said I'd take the court to whether there's any evidence that people felt that they were unfairly treated at the time. And I do that now if I may, so if I could take the court first to paragraph, to page 17 of the supplementary. This is the witness statement of Dr. Newport from CPRE, and I take the court first to paragraph 12 of that statement where she talked about her surprise. There were four speakers in favour. Then, then it's some...
This is, this is cited somewhere in the skeleton, but is it cited in your skeleton?
My lord, I can, I can check.
I just, I, I know I haven't read it in the supplementary bundle, but I know I've read it.
I suspect that's right, my lord.
Thank you, don't worry about that.
That's, so obviously that's, that's what Dr. Newport thought about that, and then if I take the court to page 153 of the supplementary bundle. And this is, it's, it's in the middle, paragraph beginning significantly. Now, what this letter is...
Yes, what is it first of all?
Thank you for reminding me, what this letter is, it's a letter from CPRE to the council after the committee meeting, where, in fact, it may even be the letter to the Secretary of State, this is a letter to the Secretary of State, after the committee meeting, where CPRE is writing to the Secretary of State, asked him, I think it was at the time, to call in the application to determine it for himself. And one of the reasons given is at page 153, and it's the paragraph beginning significantly.
Just that paragraph?
Just that paragraph, my lord, where, where I say, what I say this shows is that against CPRE is concerned itself, that this was, that this was improper, unfair.
Okay.
And then finally, page 13 supplementary bundle. What, what this is, it's an email from Heather Twizzle from Natural England to Andrea James, who is the local, relevant local authority officer. And it's the, the final paragraph she'll see sets out her reflections on the committee meeting, having seen it and being aware of what happened. And I'd invite the court to read the whole paragraph, my focus particularly is on the final sentence.
So at the top of 13, I haven't thought the matter over?
Having thought the matter, yes, my lord. So again, the point I make is it's not just CPRE receives unfairness here, Natural England quite clearly receives that this was an unfair approach.
What was the date for this? Twenty fifth of July?
Twenty fifth, so that's the day, I think that's the day of the meeting.
The impression I get from this is that she's concerned, as indeed was the other letter, with the fact that three are allowed to speak and they weren't. I don't see anything here saying we would have said additional things, or we would have sought to persuade the committee and didn't have that chance. It's the unfairness of three versus one.
That's right, my lord, I'm making a separate point here about the unfairness.
If it's a matter of counting numbers, why didn't your client apply to, to speak?
Well, my lord, of course it's not just a matter of counting numbers.
Is it a matter of counting numbers at all?
Yes, the, the numbers are, it is, it is important, I mean, one has to look at this from the perspective...
Can we just press, try that a little bit? "The local authority know all the objections by number and content." So to, to my way of thinking, it is not right to assume or assert that numbers as such matter.
Well, my lord, what I would say in relation to that is there's, there is a distinction in decision-making of this kind between local authority officers who will have been case managing the application throughout the process, producing advice to members, which does contain a summary, for example, of the objection.
Which is accepted to be sufficient.
Yes, there's no challenge, particularly insofar as it relates to the statutory objectives. But that, that report then goes obviously to, to committee members in a democratic setting, where there is debate, where there is discussion, where there are representations made. My submission, it will say, this will be the first time effectively that councillors, committee members will have been on top of the whole of the application.
Well, they've had the officers' report, don't forget, they've had correspondence that very day or the day before from someone who's telling them about the other appeal decision, and this is a structured thing. On top of that, there is a limited opportunity for three speakers, three minutes each, and for certain groups. That clearly isn't meant to be the situation in which all these points are argued through. Yes, they want to hear points, yes, they want to test the strength of the feeling. But ultimately, they have to make a planning decision on planning law, haven't they? And for that, they need to know the objective, the proposal, the objections, the arguments for and against.
That's right, my lord, but of course there is no single right or wrong answer to that question, whether the permission should be granted or not. The opportunity, the committee meeting is an important forum for all members to be persuaded by others, to persuade other people, to discuss the merits of the application. It's an important forum, and there would, in my submission, it is not unrealistic to submit that where a member sees four people speaking in favour of something, but just one against, that that would affect potentially their perception of the application and the substance of the opposition to it. I, I do not think that that can be so readily discounted, particularly given, of course, the authorities that take the court, taking the court to about how hesitant the court should be about dismissing, without finding an absence of prejudice in a situation such as this.
Well, you've given us your prejudice in a nutshell. You've given us these references, so are there more references you want us to take us to?
My lord, not in relation to the evidence, I do take, I do, in my skeleton argument report, we've seen I referred to a case called Tate.
Yes.
About unfairness. I wonder if I could briefly take it?
I think, I think we've all looked at that.
I, I won't, I won't then take the court to that directly.
And you refer to Kelly, which we've also looked at.
Yes, so Kelly is my next point, courts look at that, so I will take the court to that. But Kelly is an important case really for underlining the proposition that I've just made, which is that the committee meeting, because that was a case about a planning committee meeting, is a, is a venue at which a person can have the opportunity to persuade, and that is an important consideration when one's looking at prejudice. Kelly was another case where it was accepted that the planning authority had a detailed officer report which fairly summarized the objections to the application. And where there was no evidence about what the claimant in that case would have said, had he been there.
No, but in the absence of the claimant, there was no one to speak against.
That's right.
Do you accept that that's a material distinction?
It's, it is a point of distinction, of course, yes. But it's all part of a scale, and that's why I say it's, it should not be dismissed purely because, as the judge did, that Kelly can be distinguished on its facts. There is a point of principle that attendance or perception at a committee meeting matters. And now it may be that, yes, there is, there is a difference between having nobody speaking against an application and just one person. But there is also a significant difference in scale when one's looking at the applications involved there. Now, with Kelly, it was a, it was a residential extension, albeit next door to Mr. Kelly's house, his property, a point that the judge took. But this is major development in a national landscape, a, a landscape that is important to...
And which do you say is more important?
Well, as a matter of, as a matter of planning policy, yes, national landscapes are more important. They are more important than something that's not in a national landscape.
But is the substantive right to be heard, which is more important?
Well, it, it, the substantive right to be heard, I suppose, depends to some extent on the person's interest in the application and what you do.
If somebody's about to build an extension to the house next door, it might be said that they've got more of a grievance than if they're interested in walking their dog in the beauty of the Kent.
My lady articulates what was behind my question.
Well, my, possibly, but those, these are assumptions that I say the court should be very slow to make. Because national landscapes are, they are nationally important, but also personally important to individuals who and people feel very keenly about the importance of protecting these areas, and that's why, for example, CPRE exists, that's why my client is here before court today. So it, it, the court should not second guess, if you like, the importance of something to an individual, an appellant or claimant, simply because it's next door to them. It's, it's the point, and I would obviously underline the fact that...
Do you want us to look at anything in particular in Kelly?
No, I think what, no, I think the court, I've quoted, I think, relevantly from Kelly in my skeleton argument. But all I say is that it's, as I said, it's wrong to simply distinguish that from the fact, and actually, the judge, I think, refers to a comment by Mr. Ian Darby, as he was, sitting as a deputy, that this was an unfortunate concatenation of circumstances, and said, well, in that case, you know, this case should be confined to its facts, my lord, and I don't accept that that's the case. There was an unfortunate concatenation of circumstances which led to the appellant not appearing at the committee. But the point is, the appellant didn't appear at the committee when he had a right to, he didn't get the opportunity to persuade. That is a broader statement of principle that the judge should have entertained here. And that was an argument that put squarely before her, that the fact that CPRE was unable to attend, the fact that other bodies were unable to attend, meant they lost...
I mean, you said other bodies, you were unable to attend, what other bodies other than CPRE were unable to attend?
Well, Natural England, my lord.
Well, that's one body, and they did a joint presentation.
Yes, well, yes, Natural England is the only other body that was unable to attend, if you're going to count the claim, yes, or the appellant, if you like.
Can we be clear? Are you asserting and relying on Natural England not having appeared?
Yes.
In circumstances where they made a joint presentation with?
Yes, I am, my lord, I am, and that's the next point I want to take the court to, if I may. Because that is a point that we, we put to the judge below, and one that she rejected. Before I do that, there are just a couple, sorry, if I may, just a couple more points of fact about the importance for, for example, CPRE of appearing before the committee. They had made extensive representations inviting, but they still wanted to appear before the committee. And so if I just take the court to page 16 of the supplementary bundle, beginning, I should have taken court to this earlier.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, it's paragraph seven. And it's, it's the, it's the final sentence on that page, then moving on to page 17, beginning with, "It may be worth mentioning".
To where, sorry?
To, to just to the end of paragraph seven, so where she says, "It may be worth mentioning that at this, at this point, that in over 20 years, as director of CPRE Kent, this is the first time I have felt it necessary to apply to appear in person before a planning committee. Such was our concern at the impact of this application."
Thank you.
And so, my lord, clearly CPRE did put in written representation. It clearly felt there was a material benefit to its appearing in person before the committee. Just doesn't say what she would have said, but she clearly wanted to appear in person. And my lord, that underlines, I say, what, you know, the importance of being there in the room when these decisions are taken. And a similar point I, I made, perhaps less strongly, but a similar point I make about Natural England, to whom I'll turn in more detail in a moment, but at page 218 of the supplementary bundle, you have the, you have an extract from the transcripts of the committee meeting, and I'm looking at the, the, the bottom box, that's later number 12. And it's KM, so that's Katie Miller, who's speaking to the committee on behalf of the AOMB unit. And she obviously explains in the second sentence, "Tonight I'm speaking on behalf of Natural England as well as the AOMB unit, as protocol only allows one organisation to speak. We have taken what is for both of us an unusual decision to address you because the mat, the application raises matters which we consider to be of national significance."
And the key issue is the harm, is it the harm that this would do?
It's not just a question of what the harm is, but it's how, it's how the harm has been approached.
It has to do with the harm, the issue is harm, the key issue is harm.
Yes, the key issue is harm, and the justification for that harm. So there are two, so there are two issues that she raised, and I'll take the court to those now because then I won't have to...
But Natural England are saying something different from what the AOMB unit is saying, are they? They're both of the same, because the harm and the assessment of harm, however you want to put it, was wrongly done.
Yes, my lord, yes, that's right. My lord, if you give just one moment, there was another point I wanted to take the court to from Miss Miller's, from this transcript, and I just want to make sure I've got that before moving on, so that I don't have to take the court back. Yes, two points, and the first is that she refers obviously there to the Medway decision, and to the court, I'm sure we've read that reference. And that, that is relevant for ground four, but the point I want to underline is that what she says there, and the, this is on page 219 now, the first substantive paragraph on that page. She says, the point she takes from that, which is the same point that CPRE takes from it, is that what the inspector was finding was that the... it was not a national consideration, and that the expansion of the wine industry was neither a national law or local priority, in which I say that's a statement of generality, a general finding that the inspector made in the Medway decision. Not one that was just specific to the facts beforehand. I'll come back to that round four, but that's where I take that from. And then there's a separate issue, a separate point in the subsequent paragraph where, as my lord, Lord Justice Lewis has identified, the AONB unit is addressing the committee on the question of harm.
Where are you?
Yes, page two one nine.
Yes.
And it's the paragraph in Officers Also Reach Different Conclusion.
Thank you.
I think best just allow the court to read that, and then there's, I want to highlight in particular that Miss Miller discusses the officer's report, and she says in the report, officers advised that harm would be limited because the effects are localised and much of the development would be screened by landscaping. But this misses the point that landscapes are experienced locally and policy is clear that its landscape character, as well as seen in beauty, is protected.
Then it goes on to say it's inappropriate to justify harm on the basis of the existing adjacent industrial estate. And then it goes on to say you should give considerable weight to these statutory consultees like Natural England. So leaving aside the rights and wrongs of those arguments for a moment, put that to one side. There's no suggestion in any of this that something else that Natural England might have said or the importance of Natural England's position as a such consultancy, none of that has been left unsaid, has it?
Well, my lord, as you will have seen, Natural England, as well as the AONB unit, provided a very detailed written representation.
Yes, we've got that, but in terms of making statements to the council during the three minutes, I understand that there would have been six minutes, not three minutes. But I've not seen any suggestion in the evidence that the joint submission that went orally from Miss Miller left out something that Natural England would have wanted to say or left.
We don't have evidence from Natural England. There is much more they might have said, and I can't put it any higher than that, but there are, for example.
But where's the evidence that there's much more that they might have said?
Well, there are other specific issues that Natural England raised, for example, in relation to the way in which the landscape harm had been assessed, the LVIA, Landscape Visual Impact Assessment. A number of specific criticisms were made of that, for example.
In their written objections?
Yes, but my lord is saying, well, what more would they have said? There is more that they could have.
No, 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 I didn't ask you that question. That's precisely the question I didn't ask you. I asked you, is there any evidence?
There's no specific evidence about what they would have said had they been given the opportunity.
And no evidence that what was said by Miss Miller in some way left out things that they said?
Well, save in respect of it, it remained the case that they both wanted to speak, they both wanted to use their time.
But turning to the question that I asked, because it's a court of law which proceeds on the basis of evidence, is there any evidence that Natural England think that Miss Miller omitted something that they would have wanted to say?
No, there is no evidence that they think that she omitted something that they would have specifically wanted to say to the committee. I've taken the court to the evidence that they felt that it was unfair, they weren't allowed to speak, and it was the court knows they were, they were taking an unusual step then in wanting to speak to the committee in person. And so as the court have observed, the judge concluded that the claimant couldn't rely on any prejudice if there were any prejudice to Natural England, because it's not a body, she's not a part. Judge relied on the, well, she was certainly taken to the judgment of Mr Justice Holgate, it was in the Emberton case. And if I may, to take the court to that briefly. That's tab six of the authorities' bundle. So a claim with a number of grounds, certain grounds in total. It was a challenge by the parish council to an application by a local farmer for planning permission for a livestock building and dwelling in the AONB, in that case as well. So there were a number of grounds, they're summarized at H4 in the headnote at page sixty-three onwards. And it's ground six that's particularly relevant to this case, that the local planning authority failed to notify objection for the date of the planning committee meeting and thereby prejudiced their ability to make representations. That is addressed then in substance from page eighty-five of the authorities' bundle onwards.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five, yes.
Thank you.
Paragraph one thirty, you see the summary of the complaint under ground six. And that's centred, I think, ultimately on the position of the National Trust. Now, in terms of relevant facts here, the court may be ahead of me, but paragraph one three five, judge looks at the factual basis, says the National Trust were identified as a consultant at the validation stage and was consulted. It's a neighbouring landowner. Consulted on that basis. It sent a detailed letter of objection. Didn't ask to be notified of the date of the committee meeting. Paragraph one hundred and thirty-eight, judge records that the National Trust was not specifically informed of the date of the committee meeting. But at its highest, Natural England, the National Trust, forgive me, said it couldn't have said whether, for sure whether it would have attended. This is the last sentence of paragraph one three nine. The representative would have read the committee report and decided whether or not they were going to attend. It's very, didn't know whether she would have attended, but it's very likely they would have made additional comments.
Well, with the whole paragraph, it's unlikely that she would have attended herself, but a member of the National Trust property staff might have spoken.
Yes, yes, that's right. So they might have spoken, and they put it no higher than that in that case.
And what did the judge decide? Was there unfairness?
He decided there was no unfairness. So my lord, I just want to record one submission that was put to the judge, paragraph one four seven. This is effectively the principle that's relied on here. Taken from the judgment of this court in Wainwright. And then the judge then deals with that. So that principle, in essence, is that it will only be rare or comparatively rare that the claimant has had the opportunity of making detailed representations that will be able to rely on a failure to consult others. That's the proposition, if you like, of law that was put to Mr Justice.
That's an extract from a case made in submissions by the advocates in that case. So what did the judge decide here on the fact of this case?
Yes.
Where National Trust weren't told might or might not have attended, and somebody else was saying that's the prejudice that I've suffered. What did he decide?
You have that at paragraphs one four nine and one fifty, my lord.
He said, Wainwright's not conclusive, facts are different, but this isn't one of those comparatively rare cases where you can say that the failure to notify the National Trust caused any prejudice to Mr Ainsley. A, they didn't want to go. B, they'd written two letters of objection setting out their views in detail. Committing you all about the objections. National Trust was party to the pre-action protocol but didn't actually join in the judicial review. And nobody had identified what additional points would have been made by the National Trust if they'd turned up. So pretty comprehensive.
Yes. So the judge gives his own clear reasons why, on the fact of that case, nobody could rely on prejudice.
And it might be said there are striking similarities with the current case.
Well, my lady, there are some, but there are also striking distinctions as well, which I'd like to address the court on. First, which is an argument which may not find very much favour, but the point I make is that this, if you like, the decision in Wainwright, the principle that the judge applied in this case was that it's only where a claimant has not been given the opportunity to make detailed representations, sorry, has been given the opportunity to make detailed representations on their part, that it would be rare that they come along the failure to consult others. And of course, it's my submission that the appellant and CPRE were denied effectively, directly or indirectly.
Hang on, this is, the parallel is the appellant, Mrs Moakes, and whether she can rely on what happened to somebody else. That's the parallel, and she didn't want to turn up. She had to have the opportunity to make written representations, and indeed, as an individual, she could have turned up. So that's the parallelism. Can she then rely on the fact that CPRE wanted to turn up but couldn't?
Well, my lord, I say obviously that she can. I don't accept that, because the way in which the judge is analysing this case is not by reference to CPRE, but by reference to Natural England. And obviously, I've been through those submissions in the honourable papers, and the judge is quite clearly not taking that position in relation to CPRE, and I say that is important.
Right. So let me get this straight then. Are you saying that the fact that Natural England did a joint submission, not an individual submission? Are you saying that that gave rise to prejudice that Miss Moakes can rely on? And that's where we are at, is it?
That's where we are, and yes, that is, though I do say that, my lord, yes. I say that for a number of reasons. But one of the most important, I say most significant here is that a key distinction, clearly, the National Trust, nobody knew whether they were going to come or not. Natural England, we know specifically they wanted to attend, and they felt there was unfairness in them not having been allowed to attend. That is a very important distinction, in my opinion. But even more important, I say.
The fact that they may have felt that there was unfairness doesn't mean that there was unfairness, particularly if they were being represented by another body which was putting their point of view.
My lady, of course, that's right, but when one is deciding what is fair or unfair, there is a one must also look, what would a reasonable observer have thought was fair, my lord? And the National Trust, the Natural England, it is relevant, I said that Natural England felt they had been treated unfairly. Don't say, don't say that's conclusive evidence of unfairness, but it is relevant.
Well, it's also relevant, isn't it, that there was, under the council's policy, there was only one slot for an organisation. Individuals could speak, but only one organisation was ever going to be allowed to speak. So you were inevitably, if you apply the constitution properly, going to find oneself in a situation where only Natural England or AONB or CPRE would speak as an organisation.
Well, my lady, that is, in fact, the very trap that the local planning authority fell into and where it went wrong, because what the judge found is that there were three speaker slots, three slots for persons who could speak. If those slots were full, then there was only one additional slot for a group. But because those slots were not full, the council should have allowed Natural England to speak, and it didn't. It advertised those slots as being individual speaker slots. Which is what the judge found to be misleading. So had the local authority not made the error it did, then both Natural England and the AONB unit and CPRE could have all spoken.
Is there any other difference between Emberton and the position in this case of far as Natural England is concerned?
Yes, there is one.
Five points. The first one you've got, yes?
Well, the fact that, so my lord, I can tell you, take the court through these. Clearly, it is correct, the second point, that Natural England did write letters of objection, and it is it is an application where there were significant objections, that's the third point. Clearly, Natural England was not part of the pre-action pre-school letter, and nobody has identified. So those are all similar points. But it is a key distinction that Natural England wanted to speak, and there is also another factor, which is that Natural England was a statutory consultant, an expert statutory body whose views as a matter of law have to be given significant weight. That is very different.
Forgive me, forgive me for interrupting you. The fact that it's statutory consultant would be relevant if they had sought to make written submissions and been refused. They didn't, they weren't refused, they made theirs, they gave their consultation. How does that affect the question of speaking?
Well, because my lord obviously didn't know what they would have said, but.
No, 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 no. The way I understood, forgive me, the way I understood your submission, you were saying that the fact that they were statutory consultees added something to your submission that they should have been allowed to speak. Now, we know they because of three point three point one, know the point there. But does the fact that they're statutory consultees add anything to your submission that they should have been allowed to speak?
My lord, no, because, I mean, the judge found, yeah, sorry, yes, the judge found that they should have been allowed to speak, and that is what she found. No, it goes to whether the appellant in this case can rely on the failure to let them speak, like, in her own cause, to establish prejudice to her interests. Now, as I said, Natural England's a statutory consultant. As a matter of law, the council was required to give significant weight to Natural England's advice.
That's your next point, that's ground two, isn't it?
Well, my lord, it's both, it's both, because this was part and parcel of Natural England's advice giving function. No one's saying Natural England was acting outside of that purpose in seeking to speak.
They were told what Natural England's objections were, and I, we pointed out that they were reminded that they were a statutory consultant. I mean, if you're looking at prejudice and it's a joint session, and they're told what the views are, and they're told that they're statutory consultants, in all honesty, is there any real additional point, Mr Fulbrook?
My lord, there is, which is this. It is, I mean, Natural, the AONB unit explained this, and it is as a matter of practice, very unusual for Natural England to attend a committee meeting. It's unusual for them to do so. So the fact of Natural England pitching up and making whatever representations it was going to make, in my submission, again, the court should be very slow to say that could not have influenced the decision to take. Appreciate that the committee had Natural England's views. I don't say it was misdirected as to the weight it should give to those views, although I do say, as per my ground two, it didn't give significant weight to those views. But the fact of Natural England turning up in those extremely unusual circumstances is something that could have affected the decision.
And they were told, they were told, we've taken orders for both of us, AONB and Natural England, an unusual decision to address you because the application raises matters which we consider to be of national significance. They were told that by Miss Miller. So in all honesty, is there anything in this point?
Well, my lord, I maintain that there is, and I maintain that partly because the fact of that is, again, that I've taken the court through the authorities, saying one should be very slow to second guess what might have happened had somebody else been able to speak. It's one thing being told, why, for the AONB unit, local body who you see, who doesn't, again, it's unusual for them to attend, these are our views.
Well, is the position then, Mr Fulbrook, that if you can't second guess what they would have had, you must assume there's prejudice?
Well, my lady.
Seems to be your case.
No, I think unless, I mean, unless the court is very certain, no, that's not my case, that's not my case that you can simply assume there'd be prejudice if you don't know what they would be, but simply that the court should be the court should be very slow to find that.
Are we being very slow? Do we have to take a decision? We've taken twenty-eight weeks to reach the decision. What should it be?
Well, my lord, you have my submissions on that.
Yeah, I think we do. Can we just pull this together on ground one? Because I think you've, with some fairly persistent pressing from us, I think we've covered most of the ground on ground one.
Yes, my lord, we have.
Is there anything else that you want to say on ground one? That you think we may have missed?
I think we've, I think we've covered, I'll just check, I'll turn my back, but I think I.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, I mean, it's really just to deal with the point my lord, Lord Justice Lewis made, well, what difference would another three minutes make? Well, I can't say what they would have said, but they would have had longer to make a number of the points that they did make in writing, and obviously that's the point I've come to now, very specific criticisms, for example, about the LVIA and things like that. So you're right, my lord, that concludes ground one then, so move on to ground two.
Yes.
There's a little controversy in the law about this, but I don't think it's one that really bears on this court. So the general statement of principle, and I don't think it's in dispute, is, you can find it a number of places, but I've included Wyatt, the judgment this court in Wyatt, in the authorities' bundle. And it's paragraph nine, little four of that decision, and it's at page one hundred and two of the authorities' bundle.
Would you give me a moment, please?
Of course.
So this is the judgment to Sir Keith Lindon?
Yes, my lord. Yes, my lord. Now, this is a judgment in relation to the application of the Conservation of Species and Habitat Regulations. That's to do with effects on biodiversity ecology. Obviously, this case is about the national landscape. But it is a case which cites general principles about how the local planning authority should view advice from statutory consultees, in particular Natural England, which has a statutory function in relation to national landscapes or AONB. And the principle is that significant weight should be given to the advice of an expert national body, a national entity with relevant expertise. And that, of course, the local authority may lawfully depart from such advice, but it must have cogent reasons for doing so. Now, there has been some debate about whether, what do cogent reasons mean or look like? And indeed, the judge...
Well, they've got to be cogent.
Yes.
And they've got to be reasons.
Yeah, exactly, well, that's right.
Do we need any further elaboration?
Well, no, not for the purposes of this case. It's what approach the court, what standard of reasoning is required in the decision letter. There are authorities touching on that, well-known authorities, South Bucks and Auto being E1. Whether the requirement for cogency adds anything to those is a question which is debated. It's not a point that I particularly take in the course of this appeal. And we're happy for the court to approach...
Law on reasons is pretty well-travelled, isn't it?
It is, but it is, I mean, my lady friends referred to the size of our judgment, for example, by Mr Justice Holgate, which the court obviously has all had some questions whether cogency is helpful in this scenario. And I'm not a debate I want to bring the court into. I'm happy that the court can assess the reasons by virtue of the standard South Bucks principles, which are well-trodden. And those are, so may not be necessary to take the court to those. But it might help, I think, if I take the court to the case of Wotton, which is the judgment of Sir Duncan Oosley. And so Wotton is at tab 11 of the authorities' bundle, starts at page 234. Before I take the court through this background to that case, Sir Duncan Oosley quotes from the South Bucks case at paragraph 25 of that decision. So it's helpful, that's the, if you like, that's the key paragraph from South Bucks. It's well-trodden, court are sure will be familiar with its contents.
I think you can take it that we have read this.
Grateful. And obviously, there are, first of all, the readers, the reason need to enable the readers to understand why a matter was decided as it was, what conclusions were reached on the principal controversial issues. And then additionally, the reasons must not give rise to substantial doubt about whether the decision may be preserved in law. But of course, well-established that reasons don't need to deal with every material consideration. Now, that standard was applied by Sir Duncan Oosley in the Wotton case. That case was a challenge, again, to a grant of planning permission by the local planning authority for a crematorium. The claimant, who was opposed to the development, submitted a number of expert reports in support of his objections. And the issue before Sir Duncan Oosley was to what extent did the officer report, which accepts in the statement of reasons for the decision in that case, need to deal with those expert objections? And the key paragraphs are 30 and 31 of that judgment, so have to go through there.
So is the test for us on ground two whether anybody could be in real doubt about why the officer came to the conclusion that they did? Or for that matter, the judge came to the conclusion that she did?
Where I say the judge has gone wrong is that you also need to be left in no real doubt about why it was, why it was that the views...
So you're focusing on the judge's reasoning?
No, I'm focusing on the officer report and the reasoning for the council. I'm focusing on the judge, and the judge has approached that reasoning. What did the council have to explain before it provided legally adequate reasons?
She found that the reasoning was, she applied the appropriate test, and she found that the reasoning was adequate. You say she was wrong to find that the reasoning was adequate because there were certain things that they should have said that they didn't.
My lady, I think I wouldn't go so far as to say she fully applied the appropriate test, because this is why I take the court to the case of Wotton, which says this directly. Because what the judge in Wotton says, starts at paragraph 30, talks about the porter test and about needing to have the reasons. So it still leaves the question applying porter of whether reasons have to be given for rejecting the response from objectors which was reported by detailed reasons and expert reports. And then the judge goes on to say, well, those reasons may not be apparent from the fact that contrary propositions have been accepted. Is it enough to say that those contrary propositions have been accepted without saying why? He goes, obviously, the court can read this, but there should be a discernible answer to why did the officer or council reject my or my expert's points on the principal issues in controversy? Otherwise, a level of reasoning arises, a serious issue as to whether material considerations, representation has been ignored or misunderstood. It goes on then...
His statement of principle starts there, doesn't it?
It does, yes, yes.
Okay, well, I think we've probably read that.
Yes.
What did he actually find on the facts of this case? Just out of curiosity.
Yes, he did, he found, forgive me, but I believe he allowed the claim on the basis that insufficient reasons had been given. But I, I'm afraid I'd have to double check. I rely on it for the statement of principle. It doesn't, for example, involve statutory consultees here. It just involves the experts who were engaged by the claimant in that case.
You certainly caution the decisions, sir.
But it's helpful to understand how, you know, statements of principle in the abstract are very well.
I understand that, my lord.
How they apply on the facts. It would have been helpful to have seen what the issue was and why it was deficient.
I understand that, my lord. I mean, there were a number of expert reports relied on here, so it's difficult to summarise it.
The paragraph, really, where he deals with it is what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
My lady, may I assist you on that further in reply, but...
Yeah, it looks like a paragraph 104 onwards. Says in my judgment, the significant error to interpretation, inadequate analysis on a key policy and on a principal pointing controversy.
In this case, the principal point in controversy was the degree of harm, wasn't it?
Yes. And I think question of need as well.
The impression I'm getting is that there were two limbs to the policy that was being applied, and one of the limbs wasn't considered at all, but that's on a very superficial read-through. But if the statement of principle is general, and you look at the facts, and that's what happened, it may colour how you apply them to this case. Anyway, you won't bother with it.
I'm afraid I can't, I hesitate to assist further at this point, but I can in reply if necessary. But I, you know, obviously, do take the court to that statement of principle. The idea that it would be likely, I mean, speaking in, obviously, paragraph 30, the judge is speaking in generality, and so it's likely that it will be necessary to expressly explain why you have not accepted the views of an expert consultant. There's obviously paragraph 31, which is important. There's a qualification to that because it deals with the way in which an object was dealt with depending on the nature of what is said, depth of reasoning. Don't need to deal with every single point, clearly, and I don't say that the council's required to deal with every single point. But again, the judge making the point, this is not reasons for reasons. It is an important part of the reasoning behind the decision itself, particularly where you've got statutory expert consultants involved. So that's what I take from the law. I say that was rightly decided, as a matter of principle, that those paragraphs are correct, and I don't detect any particular challenge to the reasoning in that judgment from my learned friends. And so I turn to looking at how this matter, how this question was dealt with. First of all, just to discount, there are a few matters which were taken below which are not taken here. We took a point about how heritage matters were dealt with below, and that's dealt within the judgment of paragraphs 88 to 90, and we don't pursue that. The judge then turns to looking at the AONB from paragraph 91 of her judgment. Obviously, the court's very familiar with that. Judge, paragraph 92, summarises some of the AONB issues. The effect of the adjacent country business park, what was said to be downplaying the LVIA of impact on landscape character, impact of additional planting, impact of the height of buildings and lack of need.
Right, we've read the judgment.
Yes.
Are you going to take us to the officer's report first? Or are you going to deal with what you say is wrong with the judgment?
What I propose to do is to take the court very briefly to some of the key things that the statutory consultees were saying, then to the officer's report, and then very briefly to the judgment.
Okay.
By my logic. So it's obviously important to understand what the key advice was. There's a summary of that to my spare time from paragraph 47, which the court will have read. But I think it is helpful to see some of the specific things that were said. So the first is the advice from the AONB unit, which you can find at page 30 of the supplementary bundle. Starts, obviously, don't ask the court now to read one of that, but just really to give...
Okay, I'm behind you.
Not at all, my lord, it starts at page 30.
30, yes, thank you.
There are just a few sort of sentences, if you like, I'd like to highlight to the court from this. So going to page 34. And the second paragraph on that page, as such is...
Have you looked at that already, haven't you? I've highlighted it, which I started doing during with your submissions.
Well, I...
As such, it is the view of Kent Downs?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes, maybe, forgive me if I've taken the court's attention already, but yes, that's... See, the identification of significant detrimental impacts to landscape character is important. And then to page 40. And you get a conclusion on landscape impacts at page 40 at the top. It says, first substantive paragraph to Kent Downs, AONB is of review, that the event would result in a major adverse impact to landscape character. And then the conclusion overall, there would be significant adverse effect on landscape character. And then page 41. Towards the, towards the bottom, second paragraph from the bottom. This is, this might be a matter of some importance where the AONB unit is dealing with this question of the relevance of the existing business park being next door to the proposed site. Says a number of things, but concludes by saying it would be entirely inappropriate to justify further harm to the AONB due to the presence of this existing detracting feature in the landscape. And then the next paragraph goes on to explain why that is, and explain the key distinction here, which is often missed, between landscape impacts and visual impacts. Perhaps invite the court just to read that briefly.
Thank you.
And then on page 42, I'm not going to read through it, but you can see there also concern being raised that impacts of the development on tranquility and lighting, which all says relevant to the AONB and its special characters, and not addressed by the applicants, LVIA. And indeed, from page 44 onwards, you get very specific and quite detailed comments on the LVIA itself. Obviously, under landscape effects, page 44, the AONB unit disagrees with the values and susceptibilities assigned to landscape sectors. Then if you go down three paragraphs, it talks about what it says it should be. And then it goes on to say, it is also considered that the magnitude of landscape effects has been significantly underestimated in many cases. And the final paragraph talks about the reduction in magnitude of change assigned to many of the landscape sectors from year one to year 15. And they say, we strongly disagree that the proposed mitigation, which is up for landscape plant, to screen development, would lead to the stage reduction, no amount of landscaping or view can compensate for the loss in landscape resource that would result due to the change in the character of open countryside. And they go on to say it's wholly unrealistic to suggest the effect of openness land use and the application site character would have been reduced to moderate from slight, reduced to moderate to slight adverse effects, as reported. So there is fundamental disagreement on these points. And these points particularly going to the landscape character effects, the relevance of the existing building to the extent of harm to landscape. And in that similar vein, the extent to which planting, screening could ever mitigate those harms. Unholy unrealistic, says the AONB unit in relation to that. Then skip forward to Natural England's advice. That starts at page 55, their first advice. Just highlighted a couple of points. But as you can see in the box, they identify...
So whereabouts are you looking from?
So page 55, and there's a box there, summary of Natural England's advice. And they say, the development would have a major adverse impact on the purposes of designation. Kent Downs.
Were these before or after? I know they maintained them after the reduction in size, but they maintain these objections afterwards.
These objections are before, these are before, these are before the reduction in size. They do maintain an objection after. I'll just take the court briefly to what they say about that in brief letters. But they say, this is before a major adverse impact. I think they do, they take that down slightly.
Yeah, that's so true.
They identify, for example, page 54...
Just, this is a letter to Jessica Harrison, who is the principal... Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
So it's part of the consultation process.
It is their formal consultation response, that's right, my lord.
Thank you.
Page 56, it's the third bullet from the top where it begins, are in principal concerns? They talk about in principal concerns that they have. And then they also say, there are significant shortcomings in the LVIA, which they then set out in more detail, but they set out some of it fails to give sufficient weight to the value of the application site, underplays both the sensitivity of the receiving landscape and the visual sectors, overestimates reduction in harm between years one to 15. And then there's a question about photo one to five later as well. But again, these are, these are similar criticisms made by the AONB unit. But again, these are similar criticisms made by the A O N B unit. Again, it's about the relevance of the existing industrial estate and the relevance of planting, particularly to landscape harm. They then in the next bullet just talk about the A O N B unit, say effectively they agree with what they say, and they recommend that great weight should be given to what the A O N B unit has said. There is, if you like, common cause between the two of them. And then to say that it's not necessary, I think, to go through in detail what's the criticism of the L V I A was, but you can see it, page fifty-nine, and sixty, so very detailed and specific criticism made of the L V I A.
Where are you?
At page fifty-nine.
Where, on page fifty-nine?
Nowhere in particular, simply just...
This is Fulbrook on fifty-nine.
This is, simply to point out to the court, I mean, I obviously, I'm hesitant to take the court line by line through what Natural England said about that. I've taken the court to the summary, and this is the detail to the court want to find there, but there is significant detail here, including on page fifty-nine, where they say, although I can't find the reference now...
It's really the fourth paragraph under landscape counter impact. Natural England's view of the change in landscape counter is hugely downplayed, that's your, that's their criticism.
Hugely downplayed throughout.
Yeah.
So very strong disagreement with the approach taken in the L V I A. Then you get to, then there is, obviously, I highlighted, I mean, a pause to note in the bundle, what you get next are responses from the applicant. And then you get to the A O N B unit's response to those at page one hundred.
One hundred.
One hundred, that's right. And again, my lord, just to be clear, at this point, the scale of the development's not been reduced.
Not yet.
The author of that letter says in the second paragraph, they've read the responses, but they maintain their position. And then the final paragraph, they deal again with the presence of the adjacent business park. Permanent significantly impact on landscape character and by its nature is not capable of being mitigated. And they go on over the page to adopt what Natural England said about, again, my lord, Justice Lewis pointed out, the L V I A hugely downplaying the change in landscape character. Then what happens is you get a reduction in the scale, and so the A O N B unit is consulted again, and then you see their response at page one hundred and six. And then the third paragraph, there's a quotation from the landscape text note, which has been submitted by the applicant, talks about the significance of effect on the local character being reduced slightly, and then the A O N B unit saying, we agree with those conclusions, we agree there'll be a slight reduction in effect. But then they go on to state strong disagreement, again, with the ability of strengthening field boundary measures and planting screening to mitigate the landscape harm. In fact, say, just at the top of page one oh seven, it's inconceivable.
It's considered...
Considered inconceivable. Yes, my lord, they say it's considered inconceivable by them, or must assume that it could be concluded that the proposed landscape enhancements would mitigate the impacts of the conversion of rural field to an industrial site on landscape character. And they also go on to restate the paragraph in the revised transport note, concerns about tranquility, which they say have been missed. And then finally, you have Natural England's second advice, which is, again, responding to the reduction in scale, and I told my lord, Justice Lewis, they reduced their assessment from major impact to significant impact, you see that in the box, page one one five. But otherwise, you get the paragraph just before the bullet points at the bottom of page one one five, they see nothing to make them fundamentally alter their advice originally given, and they reiterate their points, including fundamental change in landscape character. Those are, that is, if you like, whistle stop tour of objections, and you can see they are strongly put, they focus on some particular issues, but the relevance of the existing business park to the harm, you have the A O N B unit, whose views are adopted by Natural England, saying, in essence, you cannot use that to justify harm. You have the ability of planting and screening to mitigate that landscape harm, and both the A O N B unit and Natural England disagree, A O N B unit says it's considered inconceivable, this would mitigate effective landscape harm, and a number of repeated methodological criticisms of the L V I A, including a failure to deal with tranquility and dark skies. And so now, I take the court to the officer's report, and how it's dealt with there. The officer's report starts on page one hundred and seventy-three of the supplementary bundle. Now, at page one hundred and seventy-seven, one hundred and seventy-eight, you get a summary of objections from statutory consultees.
Under those actuary, do you have any complaint about those?
My lord, no, I mean, I don't say there's anything unlawful about the way which they've set out, I'm clear below on that, won't take a point about that. My point is about how they were engaged with it, yes. Then there's obviously discussion of other representations and a number of other matters, but at page one hundred and eighty-two, you get the start, if you like, of the assessment of the effect of development character and appearance. And there's discussion, obviously, of policy, as I said, it's not, I'm not saying that paragraph one seventy-seven was not actually cited here in the report. There's then discussion from paragraph seventeen onwards of need. And I just pause at paragraph twenty, because this is relevant to ground three, there's a statement there, what we'll see and will have, I'm sure have seen already, should the proposed scheme be refused, it would stifle the growth of Chapel Down and defined lines and the Kent-based nationally imported viticultural industry in the district, which I say is an acceptance here, that the viticultural industry in general is of national importance. I'll comment on the relevance of that in ground three, but I pause here, so avoid taking the court back to that. Then from paragraph twenty-one, they look at alternatives, delivering this development here, but it's then, then it's the question of detrimental effect, so on page one eight five, starting paragraph twenty-four, that I have particularly focused on. Paragons twenty-four to twenty-five describe the development, the location, and then paragraph twenty-six, and twenty-two, sorry, enters into analysis, and it's paragraphs twenty-seven to twenty-nine, I say contained a treatment of these issues by the local planning authority. What you don't see there, is any reference, for example, at all to the specific criticisms of the L V I A which are made by the statutory consultees.
Say it again.
Any reference to the specific criticisms of the L V I A that were made by Natural England and the A O N B, you don't see any of that in here, no engagement with that whatsoever. The L V I A, as I say, or you can read from this, is that it's been accepted.
Well, that's paragraph twenty-seven, it's summarizing that there was an L V I A and that the L V I A considered earlier. And then isn't it twenty-eight and twenty-nine is the officer's view?
Well, twenty-eight, twenty-nine is the officer's view, I mean, I certainly would take, take the point, if you look at page one eight five, and three lines up where the officer goes, as such, having obviously discussed the L V I A, it's as such, it's considered. The officer takes no issue with that, I mean, that is either the officer's view or the officer's citing view, which she takes no issue with whatsoever.
Yeah.
Well, she's entitled to take no issue with it.
She's entitled to reach her own view, my lady, of course, but what I say is that she must engage in doing so, she must engage, and must be seen to engage, with the very specific, very strong and detailed criticism of that approach from the statutory consultees, and that's what you do not see.
Well, she says that, I mean, she just takes a different view, she does think it's localized within the site and the media area, if twenty-seven is her reasoning, she does think that the planning will have impacts, and if you look at twenty-eight, it is going to cause a degree of harm to the landscape value and scenic beauty, but she takes the view that the site surroundings should be viewed in the context of the existing buildings, and she thinks that to some extent reduces the harm, and she thinks there would be extensive tree coverage. And then at twenty-nine, yeah, it's going to be harmful, but given the limited views of the proposal and its context, given the business park, she thinks the harm would be at a low level, we know what she thinks, she just disagrees with the other people.
And so, my lord, I remind you of what was said in Wotton, that it is, I say, is unlikely to be enough simply to state that you've accepted a contrary point of view. So what the officer's doing, she's saying, I've accepted effectively, or she's restating a contrary point of view, she's restating the view of the applicant, I accept that view, but it doesn't, what she does not do here is give any express reason at all for rejecting the expert view of Natural England, which was strongly contrary to the views that she's finding, because the officer is...
What she should do, I mean, you say, it's close to the, they say it's close to the existing site, and the tree planting will help, you say, no, 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 the father that's close to the existing site doesn't mitigate the harm, and the tree planting won't help, and she's got to decide between that, what sort of things would she have said?
Well, first of all, my lord, it's not me that's saying it, or my kind, it's the statutory consultant, and that's what's important here, not, it is based on...
I think the point of my lord's question is, it's apparent from what you've shown us, that she has in mind, because she's brought them into the report, the strong objections to which you refer. In this, she's explaining her, I think the suggestion is that in this passage, she's explaining her reasons for not accepting the strength, or the ferocity, or however you like to put it, of the contrary view, and she does that by reference to the L V I A, and she explains where she comes out at. Now, I think the question then is, would anybody be wiser if she said at the beginning of each paragraph, I have noted the views of Natural England, so on and so forth, this is my view?
Well, my lord, I don't think that would be sufficient, because what she would have to do, what I say she should have done, is to say, well, Natural England, or the A O N B unit, and supported by Natural England, for example, say, you cannot use the presence of the industrial estate to justify the harm here.
But she thinks you can.
She thinks you can. Well, but she does think that you can, but why does she disagree? Why does she reject the considered view of the statutory body on that, that you cannot find, you cannot look to this officer's report and find an explanation for that? All you know is she accepted a contrary proposition, and as Sir Duncan Uesley says in Wotton, it's likely to be necessary to expressly say why you disagreed with the statutory expert authority.
She agrees there's going to be a low level of harm to the landscape and the scenic beauty, that's what she says at thirty-three, and because of that it's contrary to local planning policies, it's a question of how much it's harmful, and you say it's a bigger degree of harm because you can't even contemplate the landscaping and the existing business park as mitigating the horror. She says, well, actually, I do think the planning and the fact that it's next to an existing park has compared to be something completely new in the countryside is a factor that softens the horror.
Well, my lord, I think I'd go a bit further and say that there is a disagreement of principle, because I took the court to what the A O N B unit is saying about the importance of landscape, and that there's a distinction between harm to landscape and visual impact, the landscape may change, but you may not be able to perceive it still harmful to the landscape. And that's why, that's why, for example, A O N B unit, Natural England, say, well, next door might be, in landscape terms, next door might be an industrial estate, but this is agricultural land, greenfield site in the national landscape, and you are changing that to...
That's what she expressly says in the first sentence of paragraph twenty-eight, she's quite clearly got that point on board.
Well, my lady, she does, but of course...
But she then goes on and explains, she says the site surroundings are important, that's her value judgment. So she's disagreed with the expert's view, because she thinks that it's important to look at it as a whole.
But, my lady, they said, the expert says, as a matter of principle, you cannot use it to justify the harms, and that is where...
That's their view, but it's not a matter of law, it's a matter of value judgment, planning judgment here, and at the end of the day, the planning officer is the one who makes the decision.
My lady, it is their view, but it is their view which, as a matter of law, attracts significant weight.
Forgive me, this is full, but take paragraph twenty-eight as an example.
Yes.
Which is fairly typical of the way that this officer writes her report. Is there any doubt at all about how she has come to the view that she has in paragraph twenty-eight? She recognizes that it's a greenfield site, she recognizes it would cause a degree of harm to landscape value and scenic beauty, however, insights surroundings and so on and so forth, I mean, you don't need me to read it to you, you know what it says. Is there any doubt at all about what the officer's doing and the reasons why the officer's doing it in that paragraph?
My lord, there is, there is doubt about how she's dealt with Natural England and the A O N B unit's strong contrary view, or, you know, the extent to which she's given that great weight, one cannot tell, because one doesn't know why she's preferred another view to that. And as I said, I take the court back to Wotton, but it's key, when you have particularly statutory consultees, the duty to give great, significant weight to their objections and give reasons for departing from those objections, and as I said, it will likely be the case that express reasons for disagreeing are required, not just express acceptance of a contrary proposition, that's not enough.
So what is required, I mean, had she said, for example, as a matter of planning judgment, I do not accept the extremity of the views from Natural England, A O N B, whether it may be, on this topic, and I prefer, in my judgment, this is paragraph twenty-eight, would that be sufficient? Because it is a matter of planning judgment.
It is overall a matter of planning judgment, I think what she should have said is, well, you know, Natural England, their unit says, the adjacent business park, this is one example, of course, there are other areas, but cannot be used to justify the harm.
In their view, that's why I made you read out, it's considered that, not what it is.
I think they can.
Well, I disagree with that because X, Y, Z, but of course, we do not have, we do not have those reasons they are missing, and I can't, I can't myself hypothesize as to what...
If you look at paragraph twenty-nine, isn't it a development of that? She set out the conflict, you've got built development, it's going to cause harm to the landscape, you've got to look at the context, and she says, her view is, and she may or may not be right, but her view is, the scheme appears as an obvious and logical expansion of a successful rural employment site, you disagree, and that's why she thinks this is an expansion of the existing site, and that she thinks is important context, and she thinks that the additional planting will soften the visibility, those are the two factors, you take a different view, but those are the things that causes her to think, yes... but those are the things that causes her to think, yes, it's a development in an A O N B, but it's an extension of existing problem, and it's got more trees, and that's what she's saying, those are the reasons, isn't it?
Those are her reasons, but what Natural England and the A O N B Unit are saying is, you can't look at it like, you can't look at it as being an extension of something that's existing.
Could you, could you be very kind, because we know the disputes of the views, because they're set out in the reports, and you've taken us to them and so on and so forth. Could you articulate, if only for my benefit, but I think, my lord, my lady, my client, it is helpful as well, articulate what it is you say should have been done that wasn't?
Yes, I mean, simply...
Yeah, I'm also simply...
An explanation of the reasons for disagreeing with the advice of the statutory consultant of Natural England, and also with the A O N B. Why did she take a different view?
So, if, in what is sometimes called our leisure, we come back to the officer's report, and we take the view that her reasons are apparent, then you lose on ground two. And if we are persuaded that there is a deficiency in the explanation, so that an objector, or C P R E, or whatever, would not understand why she came to the view that she did, then you win.
I add one rider to that, if I may, which is...
Another win?
Which is that it's about understanding why she rejected the views of Natural England. That's the point, that's the point.
Well, you've given us that, an explanation for the reasons for disagreeing with the statutory consultees, and why she takes the view.
And if I, in my submission, if at your leisure you reach the view that she does not provide adequate reasons for that, to answer that question, then we win, I say, and if she does, I agree, then we must lose. There's one point of fact I'd like to refer to, I've taken court to it already, but this is, I took the court to the transcript of the committee meeting, where Katie Miller, Office of A O N B, says, "The officer's advice misses the point, misses the point of landscape harm here".
That's two-eighteen, two-eineteen.
Yes, that's right. Two-nineteen.
Yep.
Is the final paragraph. I think it's the third sentence beginning in the report.
Landscape's experience locally, and policy is clear that its landscape character as well as scenic beauty is protected. The report uses the words landscape and scenic beauty, and I thought they were to use two different concepts for use to reflect two different ideas.
They are, and what she is saying here, my lord, is that the officer is, I mean, in line with the objections that they've already raised, simply not understanding the landscape issue here.
She seems to understand the reason why there's disagreement with her views, and she's then joining issue with that disagreement, isn't she?
My lady, I don't agree with that, she is clearly saying, "Misses the point".
Yes, but she's saying that the advice that the harm would be limited because the effects are localised and much of the development would be screened by landscaping, those are the reasons for disagreement, she takes that on board, and then she says, "That misses the point", the point that we're making is that landscaping is local, and you've got to protect that as well as, the character as well as scenic beauty.
And exactly, and how then does the council deal with that point, the point they're actually making? We don't, we do not know, because as Miss Miller has said, that point's been missed.
Well, sorry, perhaps you could help me with paragraph twenty-eight, because I just don't understand whether these are being used in some technical sense. It talks about a degree of harm to the landscape value and scenic beauty, and I thought the landscape value was having something in the landscape which is alien to it.
Yes.
And scenic beauty, if you like, is the views of it, whether people will think it's pretty or not.
Yes.
So, when she says it misses the point, it hasn't missed the point that there are two concepts, has it?
Well, it does ally the two concepts, it does ally the two concepts.
Well, to take my question in turn, are there two concepts, yes? Does it recognise that there are two concepts?
No, not to the extent required, look, for example, at the final sentence of paragraph twenty-nine. "I find that the proposal would be harmful to the landscape character and scenic beauty",
Yes.
"but that, given the limited views of the proposal and its context in the Canterbury Business Park, this harm will be at a low level".
Now, we're at a different point of the conversation, I've understood now that there are two concepts.
Yes.
One is landscape, to do with having an alien development in a A O N B, the other is scenic beauty, how do people perceive it?
Yes.
And she says in her comments to the committee that they missed the point. Local experiencing of landscape, and the policy is clear that it's landscape character as well as scenic beauty, as is protected, both. But looking at twenty-eight and twenty-nine, it appears that the officer hasn't missed that part and is referring to both. Whether her assessment is correct is the next stage of our conversation, but how has she not, how has the officer not borne in mind that there are two concepts?
Well, because the, again, if you go, for example, to the last sentence of paragraph twenty-nine.
Yes.
The difference between the two concepts is, at least in relation to landscape impact, this is in particular where Natural England, the A O N B Unit is saying, it's just you cannot use the fact that there's a neighbouring, a next-door industrial estate to justify the landscape harm. You cannot say that the landscape harm will be mitigated by, for example, the additional planting, but globally, yeah.
But we're still at the wrong stage of our conversation, I understand that you say that you can't use the existing building to have harm, and you say that she hasn't given reasons for that, but your point a little while ago was that the officer was missing the point. And if the point is that there are two concepts, she hasn't missed that point, if the point is, there is nothing you can do to insulate or mitigate the landscape harm by reference to what's happening on the adjacent land, then I understand that.
Well, I mean, what Miss Miller is doing, she's clearly referring back, that what she says, the committee has to be taken in light of what has been said before by the A O N B Unit, for example, and she says, she starts that sentence saying, "In the report, officer's advice that harm would be limited because the effects are localised and much of this development would be screened by landscaping", that's exactly what the conclusion the officers have reached. But she's saying the point they've missed in reaching that view is they haven't properly considered that the landscape character is also protected, and you can't justify harm to landscape character based on the adjacent industrial estate, that's the point that's been missed, and you don't see an answer to that, you don't see an answer to that point in the officer's report, that's what Miss Miller is saying has been missed here.
Thank you.
And then there's, of course, just to finally, as I mentioned, the criticism of the LVIA and the issue of tranquility, that the various consultants are saying, "Toki omitted", so this is the effect of additional vehicle movements, the effect of additional lighting, "Toki omitted from the LVIA, Toki omitted from the officer's report", so no idea how those criticisms have been doubted. And there's one just final point, which is, obviously, in terms of what the judge said about this, conclusion largely at one-oh-one, the judgment I've dealt with that, with the discourse I've had with my lords and my lady about what we should be given, I've dealt with that, but then there's also an additional point about LVIA, and the judge saying, "To have required the officers to go into that level of detail about the LVIA would have reduced its utility as analysis for the issues for members, et cetera", point being that it needs to descend into that level of detailed reasoning. My lord, "I've accepted", my lord, my lady, "I've accepted" doesn't need to deal, the officer's report doesn't need to deal with every single point, but it does need to deal with the statutory objection, but I say, and I said, as I said below, the LVIA, the criticisms made of there are fundamental to those overall findings about landscape harm, and very specific criticisms are made, and they should...
Including the point about lighting?
Including the point about lighting, made quite squarely in a number of those criticisms of the LVIA, and they should have been dealt with in the officer's report, they're not, and... Yes, just finally, in relation to LVIA, this in general, these are, although, of course, the assessment of landscape harm is a subjective exercise, there is formal guidance and structured approach for assessing landscape harm and assigning levels of sensitivity, et cetera, so it's not simply a disagreement in terms of judgment, it is a formal principle approach, which is why I say that the various criticisms that document should have been properly dealt with and gravely taken seriously. So, my lords, my lady, unless I can insist any further, that's ground two, and I think it will be possible for me to deal with ground three, the pedigree before, I hope, before the court adjournment, because clearly, you have my point in relation to the officer's report.
And the issue is whether Medway is on force or not.
Exactly, that's right, the issue really is whether the judge erred in her consideration of the Medway decision. She says, "Well, that's a decision about the particular facts in that case, not a state of general principle about the national importance of the viticultural industry".
Is there a difference between national priority and national importance?
My lord, I say no, I mean, and there's sufficiently...
May I suggest that the answer should be yes? Because something may be of national significance, this is running the two together, without necessarily being a national priority?
Both, in my submission, are angling at the test in paragraph one-seven-seven of the MPPF. And I say that's where this all comes from, that's a question that both had to be considered in Medway, and had to be considered in this case, and that test is at page two-three, two of the supplementary bundle.
Yes.
And it's one-seven-seven-eight, so these are the things that have to be considered in determining whether there are exceptional circumstances in the public interest. The first is the need for development, including in terms of any national considerations. And so, this is why you get references to the national importance or national priority of the viticultural industry, because it's about trying to say, well, this might, not only will they supply some jobs locally, it is a national consideration, goes beyond the local, and that submission was rejected in the Medway appeal, and what I say, the judge says, "Well, that was just based on the very specific economic information that you put before", but I say, when one reads that, it is a statement of general application.
But if you look at paragraph twenty, it's running everything together, isn't it? It's these two companies, and the Kent-based, but nationally important industry in the district, a loss of the employment opportunities in the district, and the loss of construction pays, investment and spending from employees. It's not really saying, is it, this is an important national industry, it overrides the considerations of being in the A O N B. It's saying this is a really important industry, it's going to have benefits for the local areas.
Well, my lady, I say, paragraph twenty is saying, "If you refuse this occasion, it will stifle the growth of the nationally important viticultural industry in the district", and it's trying to pray and aid what it says is the national importance of the viticultural...
You're missing out the words "in the district".
Well, my lady, I forgive, I did, I thought I'd read those words.
Well, you had, but you downplayed them, you can't read one bit of the sentence without reading it all, I mean, if one looked at it from a common sense point of view, it's the, yes, this industry is of national importance, but it's the importance in the district that is being stressed, as my lord points out.
My lady, respectfully, I don't agree with it, because it's the importance of it for the nation, the national consideration that was the relevant one here, when one's applying the test in paragraph one-seven-seven. And there's a clear acceptance of the national importance, there is also a further reference in the officer's report to the national importance, and I forgive, I just want to find that reference before I leave this. It's in the concluding section.
Which was the decision of Lord Justice Lindblom, where he said you shouldn't read an officer's report like the statute?
There have been many, but the one perhaps my lord is referring is Mansell.
Take your pick.
Mansell, yes.
Are we in danger of falling into that trap?
No, I don't, because, my lord, I'm not trying to, I'm not reading this decision to pick errors in it, because the Medway decision comes after the officer's report. I'm just trying to help the court to understand what is said about this being a nationally important consideration.
Okay, I'm not going to engage in a debate about how the courts work.
No, my lord, I'm not asking for it to you, but just because one of those principles, as far as my lord Justice Lindblom, is that the decision has to be read as a hard one, I do take the court to paragraph seventy, the decision where this is mentioned again, the page one-nine-two of the authority fundable.
One-nine.
One-nine-two, paragraph seventy. And it's the third sentence, beginning, "The development would significantly..."
Expand the national important industry, yes, in Canterbury.
Yes, my lady.
Support of the growth of two camp businesses, I was just looking at one-four-three to one-four-four, the supplementary bundle, because we've got to compare this with the Medway decision.
We do, my lord, yes.
You see what it says? And that says, "The parents' economic case at one-ten reflects the scale of their ambition in seeking to develop the English wine market", and then they've got various, what to describe, I think, as high-level figures, and paragraph one-one-four is critical, isn't it? "The figures do not identify national considerations in support of the scheme, these assumptions which are in the pin that were not sufficiently robust, the need for the scheme in the context of the local economy has not been conclusively made", that seems to be focusing there on the fact that, although they want to have the world's greatest wine industry, if I can overstate it, there's nothing there as concrete as to how it's going to work, and then you get to one-four-two, and it's on one-four-seven, "I'm not satisfied that the need for the scheme has been established, expansion of the wine industry is not a national priority, neither is it a local priority", so reading it, it looks as if it's saying, "There's no local benefit established here on local businesses", and a national wine industry isn't a priority, or isn't a national priority, that's the issue I would say, or am I misread it?
Well, no, my lord, I think that's right, it is the statement about the priority of the wine industry, the national importance of the wine industry, that's the issue.
Priority and importance are two different concepts, priority means it takes precedence over everything else, important means important. They are separate considerations, aren't they, separate words meaning separate things, priority means you give it precedence.
Well, my lady, I mean, I would say that the straightforward reading of the inspector's decision, talking about the wine industry being a national priority, it is effectively saying it is not sufficiently nationally important to justify its importance, I mean, that's, because that is the question that he has to answer by reference to the policy test in paragraph one-seven-seven, and I'd also just refer, the second sentence, "Neither is it a local priority reflected in planning policy", this is the point, it's not reflected, there's no national planning policy reflecting the importance of the viticultural industry compared with, let's say, for instance, reference to minerals development, or housing, ever. There's no local policy reflecting the, certainly in that case, there wasn't a local policy reflecting...
You have to establish need by reference to some other factors if they're going to be able to get into one-seven-seven.
That's right, my lord, but of course, in the officer's report, I say, they do attempt to establish need by reference to the national importance of the viticultural industry. You have an inspector appointed by the Secretary of State, who obviously determines appeals all over the country, well placed to decide what is, and it's not a national priority or a nationally important consideration, saying it isn't, and that similarity was sufficient, I think all I need to show is that that similarity was sufficient to engage the duty to give reasons for departing from it. It's certainly how, I mean, this is not just, my client's reading the decision, it's how it was read by, for example, the A O N B Unit, because you see assumptions, it's how it's read by C P R E as well. Sufficiently similar to engage that duty, established by North Wiltshire, there are other cases, there's well-established authorities, I shouldn't actually go into it, but the common issue, it can be sufficient to establish that duty, but then engage the duty reasons, and there are no reasons, there are no contemporaneous reasons for finding that this is not, this is somehow a distinguishable decision. The only reasons which the judge relied upon were reasons given ex post facto by my learned friend, and I say, we have to be cautious, because we don't know what the contemporaneous reasons for finding it material were. And I say, we have to be cautious, because we don't know what the contemporaneous reasons for finding it material were, we don't know what they were. But there is enough here, I say, to say there is a common issue, we should have reasons from the council.
Sorry, what don't we know, I missed in your previous sentence, what don't we know?
The judge, the judge below found that the um the Medway decision was distinguishable.
Yes.
From this case, sufficiently distinguishable.
Effectively, it's a decision on its own facts.
Yeah, well, not sufficiently, so they didn't share anything in common that engaged that duty to act consistently, duty to give reasons that is spoken about in North Wiltshire. Does that make sense? I've asked that, I can't.
I'm listening.
Um, we don't know why the local planning authorities took that view. We don't know, because there's nothing, there's absolutely nothing before the court to deal with that, save for there are, there is a response to the um submissions of Miss Miller that are made by the uh, one of the agents, I think, for the second respondent. Um, but that, I mean, they're they're recorded in the transcript, um.
It comes straight after, doesn't it?
England do come. Yes, Miss English, they do come after, paragraph, page two twenty, the supplementary bundle.
You you need to help me again, Mr Fulbrook, this isn't a question, is it? Of whether the authority, the local planning authority, has given reasons for uh why it has chosen not to distinguish Medway. This is a legal question. Um, this court or the court below has got to determine whether or not there was a breach of a legal duty on the authority.
Yes.
By not giving reasons for saying we are not going to follow the Medway decision in this decision. And the first question for the court, or the court, is whether it thinks the two decisions are sufficiently similar to apply in the North Wiltshire case. And at one seven to one two three, the judge sets out her reasons why.
That's right, my lord, the judge sets out those reasons, those are not reasons that you will find, and the point I'm making is that these are not reasons that you will find in any of the contemporaneous.
You read the two decisions, don't you, you read this decision, you read the Medway decision, and you reach a conclusion or a judgment. And that's what she's done, like proper analysis of the Medway appeal decision.
There are clearly elements of the decisions that are different, there are elements that are remarkably similar. But the it, the point that I press my case on is the statement of general principle, the general point that the viticultural industry and the wine industry is not a national priority.
So it's hard, Doctor, to help me with the judgment, should I put a cross against it, this is where she's gone wrong?
Well, in particular, it is where the judge records that the statement of the um inspector, so paragraph one three two.
Applebrook.
No, that's the, my lord, I'm sorry, paragraph one two two, one two two. Where, for example, for for example, the judge says that, um, judge records the analysis and evidence that was put before the council by the second respondent. Uh, and then says that, um, it's about six, seven lines down, taken together with the fact that Chapel Down locked by three quarters of the development and is currently responsible for thirty percent of UK wine production. In my judgment, the officer report was entitled to refer to the proposed development in the terms that the development would significantly expand the nationally important viticultural industry in Canterbury, supporting the growth of two Kent businesses. Um, she is linking the national importance of this culture industry to the specific economic evidence provided in support of this application. But, my lord, that is where she went wrong, because as a statement of principle, either either it is a nationally important industry or it is not a nationally important industry. And what you have in the Medway decision is a clear statement, I say it's not. And here, I mean, just to look finally, the the justification the judge relies upon is that Chapel Down, for example, is responsible for over thirty percent of UK wine production. And that shows that Chapel Down might be a good, a big player in UK wine production. Doesn't say that UK wine production is some nationally important industry, doesn't take you anywhere near that.
But it's the contrast with one two one, isn't it, that's the issue, the question is the similarity or dissimilarity between the Medway and this. And at one two one, she says, the sentence that is focused on national priority is in the context of a rejection of the economic case, which did not, in fact, identify national considerations in support of it. And then she says, by contrast, this case is looking at difficult evidence, I mean, that's that's the sort of issue, is she capable of reaching that decision, but you say she's not allowed to reach that decision?
I say, I say, she's, that's not a decision that's open to interpreting the inspector's decision in Medway, she reviewed that as being a specific response to the economic case being put. I say it's a general statement about the national importance of this cultural industry, and as such, it goes that duty. That's how I put my case, and I believe.
Right, I don't want to squeeze you on time.
No.
We'll break now.
Yes.
If that's convenient for you, and you can consider whether there's anything you've missed out that you want to put forward uh and tell us at five past two.
I'm great for that.
Would that be convenient?
Yes, thank you.
Good, five past two.